Fathers and Emporious City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Jones Gillian. Mr. Roke. Mrs. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Let us pray. My Father, thank you for your grace and mercy. For without your grace and mercy, none of us would be here today. As we begin this joint meeting, I pray for the gift of love, grace, and holiness. Where all the interested parties that have gathered in this evening with the wisdom, knowledge, and humility, and understanding to make decisions that are in the best interest of all those who are elected or appointed to serve. I ask that you guide us, keep faith in us, to engage in meaningful and respectful discussions. Please, as you know, do not talk about personal feelings or strife. It presents us from making decisions that we need to make and also improve the quality of our children's education. And Lord, let those decisions be made in that particular equality. May that charity of our soul be the source of God's hour this evening. I am placed this meeting in your hands, Lord. Amen. Can I read a report of the City of Greensville County School Board Agenda? Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor, let me know by the sign. Our votes have heard now. Our agenda has been approved. I believe the City is up to now to open their meeting. And after the City opens their meeting, the county will follow. The calling of Emporious City Council to order. Mr. Roke, can you call another face?
Mr. Harris, he's participating virtually. Ms. White. Ms. Temple.
Yes.
Ms. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Saunders, participating virtually. Mr. Drake. And Ms. Collins.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? All in favor, let us say now, sign and go. All votes, motion has been taken.
I'd like to call the board and supervisor meeting to order. And we're going to the school board session. We will be in session. Session.
Ms. H. Grant. Mr. Brown. Mr. Kane. Mr. Conover.
Can I get approved of, uh, approval of the dinner? In the, in the session, we will be in at, uh, um, dinner. All in favor, do a vote.
Ms. H. Star. Mr. Brown. Mr. Kane. Mr. Conover.
Good evening, School Board members. We are the supervisor, and this is Carson, City Councilor, and Mr. Johnson. It is our pleasure to present to you Greensville County Board of Full Budget for Fiscal Year 2022. Before we get started, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank the governing bodies for the support of the school system, and in particular, our students. This year has been a tough year for all of us. Due to COVID-19, we have had to endure situations that we never thought we would have to endure as a nation, as a community, indefinitely as a school system. But I believe that working together, we will continue to not only survive COVID, but we will thrive. Mrs. Carson and staff of the local committees, thank you for hosting us tonight to make sure that we are all socially distant and, um, and keeping each other safe. So thank you. In your packets tonight, you have the following information. The presentation that you can see on the screen. The re-interpretation worksheets. The GCPAs budget worksheet summarizing, I'm sorry, worksheet summary, outlining as more specific detail the new budget requests. The 2022, the 2026 prioritized CIP request. And paper put together in the very back of your packet are all CIP requests that have been submitted since 2017, and that's where you are being time reading. The mission statement of Greensville County Public Schools, which is the driving force and cultivator of excellence. We are committed to educating our home child, making sure that they achieve their dream of being productive citizens in a competitive global society. And those students will be gathered by our committed educators and partnership with family, schools, and the entire community. This past school year, we have had to live out this mission statement. No longer work with educators in the schoolhouse solely responsible for educating children. But that partnership of family and home, community and school, excuse me, and school was very heavy than last year. And we want to thank our families, our parents, and our communities for working with us as we gathered our students during this time. Our agenda tonight is simply to share budget priorities and concerns, to share budget highlights, the savings and increases, to review federal, state, and local revenue, to share our GTPS school board approved fiscal year 2022 budget, and to review capital improvement projects in CARES Act funding. Our budget priorities are to improve student achievement. That is why we are in the game of education, to make sure that our students are achieving at the highest level possible. To address unfinished learning. Um, COVID-19 caused us, as you all know, to shut down schools on March 13th, 2020. And we were out of school for a very, very, very long time. And such, our students' learning halted. And we don't want to say that it is a long loss, because all learning is a game. But certainly, we have unfinished business with our students' learning. And so we will be playing the catch-up game for many, many years to remediate those skills that our students miss during the closing of school, and then to also accelerate them for their new learning at the same time. And in order to address our students, to improve student achievement and address unfinished learning, we definitely need to provide safe facilities. This pandemic has caused us to really take a hard look at our facilities. And one of the mitigating strategies for the COVID-19 pandemic was to ensure that the air quality is, uh, a high quality. And we noticed and know that we have issues with that, especially in some of our older buildings. And we've had to address that using some of our CARES. Our budget concerns are always the continued reduction in enrollment. In unstable economy. Remain competitive with salaries in order to, um, provide a high-quality learning experience for our students. We need to attract and retain high-quality staff members. And secure funding for capital improvement projects and facilities. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Harrow, who is going to share some of our budget highlights. And then I will come back before you and talk about some of the new requests in this camp budget.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As Dr. Evans mentioned, I'm here to go over some budget highlights. Um, since we receive majority of our funds from the state, let's take a look at two of the state budget highlights. Uh, this is the second year of the biennial. If you know that the state, um, reevaluates their budget, um, every two years, this is the second year of the biennial. Um, every year, sales tax and lottery revenue is updated, so therefore, in this budget, um, the updated sales tax and lottery revenue was updated. As you can imagine, um, this was, um, really affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The economy suffered, and this, uh, affected the sales tax revenue. Uh, we'll see how that directly affects us in a few slides. Also included in the state budget is, uh, five, um, raise salary increase for SOQ physicians. Uh, state, the state funds, um, SOQ physicians, which includes teachers, school counselors, librarians, instructional aides, um, principals, and assistant principals through the SOQ staffing standards. School divisions that certify to, um, DOB that a minimum average compensation supplement of 2% will be provided to all school divisions. Um, if school divisions that provide less than a 5% compensation supplement, but greater than or equal to the 2%, then, um, in the 2022 biennial, will receive appropriate state payment. So therefore, um, they're looking for us in the state budget up to 5% increases for staff. However, if you decide to give less than that, then that amount that's coming from the state will be pro-rated. And the state does only fund for SOQ positions. So therefore, we will ask the locality to fund all other positions just to be fair to everyone who is the same race. Also, they're restoring, um, state funding for the Virginia preschool initiative. Uh, a lot of our mandates and initiatives from our last school year's budget was cut because of the pandemic and the loss in state, um, revenue sales tax. So therefore, this budget is restoring those funds. Also, we received additional state funding for school counselors. There was a mandate to replace, um, last year. And this year, we're receiving funding for that. The ratio for all schools is 325 to 1. Um, so therefore, um, we see a lower interest for school counselor because we do additional counselors according to our student enrollment. There's also, um, providing, uh, funding for a no-loss program. And when they say no-loss program, um, the funds we receive this year will be based on, um, actual enrollment from our September 30th, um, student count. And those funds are there to supplement any of the other state funds provided in direct aid for public education. So therefore, we won't see, uh, a reduction in our funds for student loss. Because you know, we get funded from the state on basis of our AEM. So therefore, we see a reduction in our enrollment, and we receive reduction in the state funds. But this is second place of that, uh, we want to experience that this year. Okay, let's look at our budget directly. Let's start with some savings. Always good to find some savings in your budget. This year, we have savings in the debt service category for a little over, um, $18,000. We're not holding any debt service accounts this year, but we will keep some savings from the interest which comes in at $18,200. There's also, um, quite a few one-time expenditures in this current year's budget, um, that will be available for the next budget, um, cycle, and that amounts to a little over $880,000. So our total savings for this for next year's budget is $809,782. Okay, and when they come to savings, right around the corner, are the increases. Here are some of the mandatory increases, um, in the upcoming budget. Uh, the social contract is acting for an increase of 2.2% due to the governor passing the rate change for minimum wage. We had to take on some of that cost, and that's $11,800. Also, there's an increase in our maintenance contract due to equipment coming off of warranties and, um, and going on to our preventive maintenance plan. And so that increase will be $15,200. And also, we are experiencing another increase in health insurance this time. Um, by major one, a 3.7% increase, which holds us $71,470. Which holds our mandatory increases in this budget will be $98,470. Now, let's take a look at the potential impact these initiatives have had on, um, our schools with state revenue. Um, first of all, as I mentioned before, you are, um, we are compensated on a curfewable basis for state revenue. Um, last year's budget at AEM was, um, 2,075. Um, this year's budget will be based on 2,040 students. That's reduction 35 students. Therefore, the enrollment goes down, so our state revenue. So let's see what we stand. The first category is the standards of quality programs. Um, that holds all of our, uh, sales tax, our basic aid, our retirement, all the programs we need to operate a school division. Uh, we are seeing a decrease in that of a little over $52,000. And that is because of our enrollment, our enrollment is totally decreased. However, the next category is our incentive programs. And in that category, you see that we see a healthy increase, a little over, um, a million dollars there. Because that is where our no-loss funding is housed and also our compensation supplement for the foundation. Our kind of local programs will be decreased by a little over, uh, almost $50,000. And that is due to, um, a decrease in the area of home actors. Our lottery-funded programs will see an, uh, increase, um, because of at least funding. We're receiving additional at least funding. And then unfortunately, our food service department will, um, see a decrease of $13,000. They are reimbursed for, on a re, they are, um, compensated on a reimbursement status. So therefore, um, with 2028, we're going to see that decrease of $13,000. So overall, though, uh, we are seeing an increase in our state funding of 1.7 million dollars. Okay, now to the local funding. Um, I'm pretty sure you all familiar with the local composite index, also known as the LCI. The composite index, um, determines the student's ability to pay. Education calls to the Commonwealth standard of quality of those, both of those programs that's required. Um, Virginia calculates the composite index of local ability to pay every two years. This is the second year of the biennial, so we operated on this, um, index last year as well. Uh, the composite index is calculated using three indicators of the locality's ability to pay. Um, that's the true value of real property, adjusted gross income, and taxably detailed sales. And so that's how the composite index is calculated. Also, required local effort. Is calculated on school divisions annually to show that the degree to which each school has met, failed to meet or suppressed its required local expenditure in support of the standards of quality. Each locality, the, the city council, and the board supervisors has always met the required local effort and, um, beyond. The required local effort is for those SOQ programs that are required to operate. The required local match is those programs that we choose to participate in, such as like the Virginia preschool initiative. And, um, we would like to thank you for all of your funding throughout the years and how you have been over and beyond, um, funding us with the required local effort in, in making those requirements. Um, on a state average, all school divisions meet this match and go over about 89%. So we're, we're thankful for that. Okay, here's, um, a pie graph of our, uh, revenue sources. As you can see, the majority of our funds come from the state at 58%. Next, uh, is you all, the city and the county funds at 27%. And then our federal funds increased this year at 13% and our other funds at, uh, 2%. And those other funds include things like, uh, rebates, um, E-rate reimbursement, rents, uh, school buses, and, and different local, uh, funds on that basis. Thank you. Now, Evans, I'll give the slide with federal revenue. On the federal side of things, um, our federal funds operate a little differently than our other funding. They don't necessarily coincide with our fiscal year, which runs from July to June, mostly grants end in September of each year. So the figures that I have here are adjusted to add in unencumbered funds that will carry over into next fiscal year. And also remember that expenditures for these funds have already been approved by grant applications. And these applications have been amended as needed, and funds will be encumbered by the predate. With that being said, let's, let's see, um, if we have an increase in the, we have an increase in the following programs. Title one, um, is our programs that we use at GES and EES. Title two is our, uh, grant funding that we use for professional development. Title four, um, assists us with student support and, uh, healthy, um, classrooms. Title four is our rule in low income, which assists us with preschool initiatives and family engagement. Our title six, B-grant, um, is for our, uh, student with special needs, like in early childhood special education. Our 21st century grants are for our, uh, after-school programs or for-school programs. And our Perkins, um, grant is, uh, funds our CTE programs. So all of these will experience an increase in the coming year. However, our food service department, which receives a grant from the USDA, see a decrease of $37,818, due to the decrease in enrollment and inclusion. So that's the total, um, $625,561. However, this year, we received several different, um, funds of CARES Act funding through the federal government. They have really, um, been generous in trying to help us through this pandemic. Um, the second round is what I have included in the budget, and we call that the extra two funds. And for these funds, um, we are receiving a little over 3.3 million. So therefore, the overall increase for federal funding will be approximately 3.9 million.
And as you can imagine, with those increased federal funds, um, increased rooting and increased, um, direction on what you can use those funds for and what you cannot use those funds for. So our new budget request for the upcoming year includes the increase in our health insurance, our increase in, um, that we just talked about with the custodial services contract, and in the new, uh, contract for equipment and services. Personnel is, uh, is the largest portion of our budget this year. As the school division continues to focus on transforming our school system, it is important that we have the right people in place. Thanks to the governing bodies' support last year, we were able to split that assistant superintendent position into two positions. One that focuses solely on instruction and the other that focuses on, like, human resources. And as we continue to move towards full accreditation, we are focused on providing the instructional support to meet the needs of all of our students and the mandates of the state. We know that when our students return to in-person learning, they will have great instructional needs, and we need to be ready to address those needs. The school board is dedicated to attracting and retaining a quality workforce. And that dedication is reflected in our budget by a 3% raise in staff increase. And if you want to see the, I'm not going to go over every new budget request in detail, but if you look in your packet, you will see a green sheet. Packet that looks like this is green. It goes over each one of the new requests in great detail. And it also tells where it is connected to our corrective action plan. And I did not say this, and I don't think it, um, needs to be said, because I think you all know that Greensville County Public Schools is operating under a number of understanding with the state Department of Education and has a corrective action plan. So these positions, um, each position is listed here, and we will highlight some of them. The state has also revisited the mandate to provide more counselors in the school division and has reduced the per student ratio to 325. In order to meet this mandate, we need to hire two full-time counselors. Testing is a huge responsibility that the state is shifting away from guidance counselors. They want guidance counselors to serve more as counselors to students, advising them on the correct courses to take, how to prepare for graduation and beyond, and not so much on testing. However, testing is still a huge part of our program. We test almost all year round at the high school because we operate a four-by-four schedule. The elementary, I'm sorry, the middle school has two courses that's on the four-by-four, so they are tested more frequently. And at the elementary school, there has been a jump in testing because they are now able to, um, do expedited retakes. So if you score within a certain, um, point from your passing proficiency of your SOL, you can take it again, which increases the number of tests that are offered in the school. So the board has dedicated, um, resources to providing full test counselors, I'm sorry, full test coordinators to prepare for and take care of the testing in the schools, to provide the data, analyze the data, and share that data with administration. At my middle school, we are seeing a need for an instructional coach. When we get to the higher levels and our students are three and four years behind, that calls for a special skill set in order to teach our children. If you are a secondary teacher, you know your content very well. And let's take reading for an example. You can teach those strategies and teach those contents. You may not have all the skills that you need to teach a beginning reader at the secondary level. And you will need that because the expectation is at that grade level, the students are proficient. And so we need some support because literacy continues to be an issue for Greensville County Public Schools. And we have a lot of attention and focus there at the elementary school, but we also have noticed we need it at the secondary level as well. Virtual learning has taken a toll on all of our students. And especially our students with disabilities will need additional support when they return to school. Therefore, the school board supports the hiring of an educational diagnostician and a compliance specialist. Students with individual education plans and five-year board plans must be, their accommodations must be monitored closely. And if we are not providing the services that are required in the student's ITP or five-year board plan, then we become out of compliance and that bathroom is a big problem. So we need someone to make sure we, that we are in compliance with these ITPs and five-year board plans from pre-K all the way up to twelfth grade. Some of our small personnel items includes the change of our instructional technology resource teachers to eleven months and an additional computer technician. Virtual learning shifted Greensville County Public Schools to a one-to-one division almost overnight. When our students were, went home in March of twenty-twenty, we still had to provide learning opportunities for them. And we had to provide every student with a device in order to access their learning opportunities. We were previous, we were not in one-to-one device. In the buildings, we had devices, but every child did not have one at the elementary level, pre-K, fifth grade. At the middle school level, they had a device, but they did not take it home. And at the high school, they could take their devices home. Well, we went to a one-to-one division instantly so that we could continue to provide services to our students, which means that our three-person technology department has been working overtime to not just secure the devices that we needed, but to make sure they were imaged and cleaned up properly so that we could not access sites that we, that are inappropriate for our students. And then they had the task of, when the device broke, they had to fix it. When the student could not get into the device, they had to help them. So we are looking for an additional computer technician to support all of the devices that we have in place. And our instructional resource teachers were amazing during this time. And they had to help our teachers adjust to virtual teaching and learning. So therefore, we've almost tripled since March of twenty-twenty because they had to provide the support to not just teachers, but administration and the president to make sure that we were providing students with what they need. Um, the increase in technology, of course, we know, is due to the pandemic. There are some other personnel fees that's there um, as well. Um, we have a new program, the Virginia graduates uh, program. And that program is designed to assist students with um, choosing a career path to follow and help them find jobs after um, high school if they choose not to go off to college. Our instructional programs have all been vetted by our Department of Instruction and are linked along with the Department of Education, Dr. Johnson. Our programs are selected with the purpose of providing support, instructional support to our students in the form of unfinished learning. We know that when our students come back, we are going to have to provide remediation, intervention, and acceleration for our students. We are going to have to provide that in the small group setting. We're going to have to provide that support in the learning plans. And we're going to have to provide that support for in after-school. And so we know that our students can now access learning at home. And these programs will continue to help us, um, help them while they're at home because they can still access these programs and get the help that they need when they come to school the next day. Our, some of these programs, and I need to talk to the board about this, so Ms. Dunn, please don't kill me because I haven't talked to you about this yet. But many of these programs, we um, can be used. We have a new round of CARES funds kind that we know of. And so we're looking at these programs to see if these programs can be purchased using our CARES um, grant. And because this is the board's approved budget, I could not make that decision without talking to the board first. And so we'll discuss that in our April twelve board meeting. Next, we have our departmental request. And each department submits requests for different items and those items are listed. We want to look at a new accounting software. And at our transportation department, we're looking at diagnostics and tool. And here we want to provide professional development for our strivers and our mechanic. We are all about teaching and learning. And sometimes in the school division, we don't promote that for some of, some of the classes of employees. And our transportation department is making sure that our precious resources are safe on the road. And so they need to be able to continue their learning and know all the latest tricks of the trade, make sure that our buses and our cars are running effectively. We also have um, just the typical split units where um, items are out of warranty or they're old and need to be replaced, uh, general yearly maintenance contracts that we have that you all see every year. And also like our technology maintenance contract that you guys see every year as well. Our career technical education program, we are definitely looking at what programs can we offer our students to make sure that those students who choose to go straight to work after high school are able and ready to do that. And we just can't pick any old program because we need student interest. And so our students have completed surveys to get their interest. And one of the newest programs that will be introduced to Greensville County High School should this budget be approved is a male tech program. Um, our students express great interest in that. And we are trying very hard to make sure that in addition to offering programs that are viable for them, we need to make sure that we have student interest. Because you cannot invest a ton of money into a program that you don't have students sign up for and complete. Our capital improvement operating project and in this coming budget, we have a few items that we need to address. Our transportation department, um, replacing the baked doors at the bus garage. And the high school and middle school, the cobblestone stones to keep the water from running in between the buildings, between the walls of the building. At GES, the government repair or replacement. And also at GES, we have had a water issue that's been present there almost, I think, the building, the construction of a school. And we have contacted someone to come out and take a look and tell us what is the problem so that we do not have water in the, when it rains hard, and I wonder about today. Um, would we have water in the electrical circuits in certain of our classrooms? So we had someone that's coming out to take a look and find out what that problem is. And then the Adderley Academy, which is our program for alternative students. And we have included here renovation of the facility or the Adderley Academy. And that Adderley Academy is going to be a program for our students who, for whatever reason, are not successful in the regular school setting. However, we can't just throw those kids away. And we can't just put them in a building like well, like hot because we don't want to deal with people who don't like you. We don't like your people. Just go over here and sit in the corner and leave us alone. We are still obligated to educate those children. And we need to do so in a way that will cause them to want to change their behavior so that they can return back to their regular home environment. But it has to be innovative, it must be engaging, and it has to be more than complete this worksheet. And that's where in this program, everybody in this room is going to be involved. And that's because you have a story to tell. I could have easily been in an alternative school program. Don't tell them that. I used to be a fighter. I could have easily been in that program. But Jamie Williams, my fifth grade teacher, saw what you see standing in front of you today back then when I did this here. And she talked to me. She called me a lady. I'm like that. I'm just like, wow, I'm a lady. Let me act like a lady. And so that's when you're going to play a role with those students and help them understand that there is something more than just what they see. That there's a whole world out there waiting on them. Not that they're waiting on the world, the world is waiting on them and the gift that they have to give them. We just have to cultivate it. We just have to see beyond that facade that they put up and tell them, I believe in you. You can do this and we will do this together. One of the things that you hear me say, um, when I started here, there was a lot of talk about firing people. Fire this one, fire that one, fire this one. We don't just throw people away. We don't do that. Yeah, everybody's not gonna come along with you, right? But we have an obligation, especially to our students, to grow them, to put them in the best environment that they can be in and watch them work. You'll be surprised at what you can get from them. When you tell them, and I just tell them, but show them that you believe in them. And you let them see a little bit different than what they've been seeing, you'll be surprised at what they can do. So I'm excited enough that I believe in the academy. I think because it's going to reach a population that they feel is unreachable. And I just don't believe that's true. We just have to do something different with that population because what we're doing does not necessarily work. So that is a summation and a leash from me off the numbers and all that kind of good stuff of our new budget.
Now, just to look at our budget summaries, this is the budget summary as it refers to expenditures. These are the categories um, that we use, instruction, administration, and health, people, transportation, operations, maintenance, school food service, facilities, debt service, and technology. With all of the new expenditures and mandatory increases, um, the total expenditures come to thirty-eight million five hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Is looking at it um, in a different format. As you know, our business is education and as you can see, the majority of our expenditures are categorized under the instructional um, category. Uh, next comes in uh, operations and maintenance at eight percent. Seven percent is for our uh, transportation department, followed by our food service at five percent and our administration and health at four, and then shared three percent by the debt service and technology categories. All right, the bottom line, the final budget summary with all the new requests that Dr. Evans just mentioned, our mandatory increases, our new budget total is thirty-eight, around thirty-eight million dollars. We are anticipating receiving state funds at a little over nineteen point five million. Our federal funds are coming in at eight point one million. Other funds are coming in at thousand three hundred and two thousand. Therefore, that is an amount of local funds needed for this school budget will be a little over ten point three million dollars. That's an increase of six hundred and nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars in local funds compared to this um, school's budget. Um, our budget this year is increasing by six point two million dollars. However, with the increases in state and federal funds, we're just actually for an additional six hundred and nine thousand over what we received last. Um, you, this is a snippet of the revenue summary that's in your packet at the right. It's probably small there, but this is inside of your packet. The red box is the amount that you uh, uh, that we've allotted to us for this budget this year. And the upcoming budget is the one that's in there. If you fall on the right-hand side, you see the differences, our increases in our state funds, federal funds, um, the amount of our operations and then um, the decrease for the debt service gives the additional cost of six hundred and nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars requested by our local governments. Okay, and then I will talk about the capital improvement project.
In your packet because the capital improvement project here is pretty small. But you have that sheet. So you have this sheet also in your packet. And each December, the school board presents to the um, county the capital improvement project request. And it's normally on a four by four year uh, cycle. And we always say, and one of the questions is, are you ready to proceed? And we always say, whatever year it is, like, no, we are ready to proceed. Realizing that as a few who've been here since I've been here, I've said this since I've been here, there is no money trick. And you can't shake money out of a trick. I wish we could. We'd have some nice tricks. But we have to make a plan for how we are going to address facilities with committed funding moving forward. And we don't have that. We have our requests. And then each year, we don't really know what's going to be um, budgeted or approved. But long-term, we have to start thinking about facilities because our facilities are not in the best shape, especially in the high schools and especially downfield. And the longer we wait, the worse the condition of the schools will be and the higher the price tag is going to go. So we've been very fortunate, a very blessed mission to receive those CARES funds. The second round of CARES fund did allow for us to address some building needs. And you will see on our budget request, CARES funding because we have included those items in our care application. And CARES funding will take care of those. What you see highlighted in green are items that we will put into this next round of CARES funding for building needs. Mind you, we can't just say, you've given us this money, we're gonna do what we want to do with it. It must be approved. But we put that in there to show the faith that we are willing to work with both governing bodies and use the funding sources that we have to also address our facilities needs. The roof repairs at E W Y N, um, that's been forged because we are not quite sure yet if that is in allowable expense. So we're checking and asking. So we're checking and asking. I wanted to do the dumb ask, dumb tell, but just put it in there to get it going. But I felt that it was important that I highlight that to you, you all, because we're not sure if that will be approved with this next round of CARES funding. But we are using the CARES funding as allowances to take care and address some of these capital needs as well. So we're going to highlight that to you. And I cannot emphasize enough the need for a long-range cleaning of a school facility. And it's not going to happen overnight, but we have to start somewhere with that. And it could be in 2025, we're going to do this. And then in 2028, we're going to do that. And then in 2030, we're going to do this. But that's important to have so that when the school system, I don't think too much more CARES money is going to come our way. But we can better utilize these funds if we know where we're going. And it also helps us present a better budget because we're not asking for things if we know that in two years, this is going to be taken care of. In three years, this is going to be taken care of. But the longer we wait to do that, the worse condition our schools will be and the higher the price tag is going to go. So we just wanted to share with you these requests and how we are using our CARES fund to take care of them. And a new building, a new high school, a new Bellfield Elementary. We have to start having those conversations for how we are going to do that. G E S is our newest school, and it's time for new moves for G E S. And that's going to be a great deal. So we have to come to the table and work together to address the need and, you know. I'm talking about the schools because that's where our kids and our teachers are. But the bus transit, transportation, maintenance, the school board office. As we talked about COVID-19, you know how sometimes you know something, but you don't really pay attention to something? There is no window in that building. So when you talk about air quality, there's a window, the open window. If we think we're here running, we have to get up and go look out the door to see, is it raining? Is that rain or not? So when we start thinking about our facility and we talk about what we want our students to be able to know and be able to do, when we talk about attack, attracting and retaining high-quality staff, then we need to make sure that our facilities are conducive to the learning that we expect our students to achieve and also for our teachers to teach it. So thank you for listening. Thank you all for coming out in the rain tonight. We appreciate being able to share this with you. We will entertain questions at this time. Or if you need time, like I would, to digest and think about it, you can share your questions with either Mr. Johnson or Ms. Austin, and we will be glad to set a response to you. Ms. Dunn, would you like to have any words or?
I'd like to thank Dr. Evans. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I think one of them, one of the other answers that I wanted, who was asked. It appears all that says that's been taken to operations, operations question. Is that correct? And this question through any portions of the C I P request list.
Can you repeat your question about the debt service?
It appears all debt service savings has been taken to the operations.
Yeah, so every year, the debt service is a piece of the operating budget. So whenever I see a savings in there, it comes, it comes out of there every, every year. Is that what you're asking?
That's, that's how I'm interpreting my question. Then the second question is, this is, this is not our question that I'm going to ask you to weigh with Senator.
Sure.
One more question, the Santa Claus v. Biden's program includes any possible capital. I do believe you answered that a few minutes ago. I'm just asking the question.
As far as repairs or upkeep, but new buildings, new facilities, no. You're welcome.
Are there any more questions today?
Comment, I'd like to thank Dr. Evans and her staff for that very detailed budget that she presented to all of us. I'd like to thank the county and the state for the support that they have given the school division over the years. And I do hope that when you look over our budget, you will be as convinced as we are that we need every penny that we're asking for in our operating budget and our capital improvement budget. And that soon and very soon, we will all come together and start that plan for capital improvement with Dr. Evans just mentioning. Because she is so right, the longer we put it off, the higher it's going to get. And nothing is going to go away. The high school is not going to get any better. It's going to get worse. So we need to do it now, you know? You tend to put things off, but what we need in capital improvement needs to be done now. But once again, we thank you all for listening. At this time, if no one, everyone is shook, their hearts are not clear, I'd like to ask the city to adjourn their meeting first, then the county will follow. And then I will adjourn the Greensville County Public School Board meeting.
I just want to say thanks to Dr. Evans or her staff. For the information, I do have to look over and see. Any other questions? I will go there, Mr. Johnson. All right, I would like a motion to adjourn. All in favor, if you know about sign A. Meeting.
Now, can I have a motion that the Greensville County Public School Board be adjourned, please?
So who, Emily, that we adjourn the school board meeting?
Jan, Jan, no questions, you go second. I'm going to second that we number sign A. How close have you heard now? The Greensville County Public School Board is adjourned, and I'll join me and then officially adjourn. Thank you.